It's 6:30, 9th Avenue, the Film Center Building Lobby, an interior landmark. It's docket number 166579, block 1035, lot 1. An Art Deco-style interior lobby designed by Eli Jacques Kahn and built in 1928-29. The application is to replace light fixtures, replace and relocate the lobby desk, and install doors, security turnstiles, a fire command station, and signage.
Good morning, Commissioners, Olivia, Preservation Staff. The building, 6:30, 9th Avenue, is located here on the northeast corner of 9th Avenue and West 44th Street. The building itself, which is known as the Film Center Building, is not a landmark. However, its lobbies were designated as an interior landmark in 1982. So the extent of the interior designated space is the 9th Avenue Lobby here, and the 44th Street Lobby here, and they meet here at the elevator lobby. And the purpose of the proposed work is to improve security at the building, update some of the lobby furnishings, and improve lighting levels in the lobby. And I'll turn it over to the architect to walk you through the details of the proposal.
Anthony Johnson, Rosen Johnson Architects. So this is the existing condition. The focus of our work today is the main lobby here, the vestibule, the entrance, and the elevator lobby. You can see here the existing, there's an existing desk right in the middle. There are existing light fixtures, wall sconces that are mounted along both sides of the walls. Both of those are not original. Here are some old photos. We have an old from the archives on the left, close to one that was built. There was one after renovation at some point. On the right, these are the existing conditions back in the, at the back elevator lobby, so it's very dark. The two previous photos were done professionally. You can see they had some backlighting coming in from the elevator tabs, which we did not have here. This is, more accurately represents what it looks like when you're in there. And then in the vestibule, on the left is an older photo, although there was a not original light fixture added in that one. And then this is the existing condition with the two wall sconces on it. And this is the existing condition as it is now. So they have the wall sconces that were added along the way on both sides. The uplighting, there's the desk in the middle. There's an abandoned bronze glass door to the left which goes to a tenant, which is not used anymore. So the proposal is to add security turnstiles at the opening to the elevator lobby, relocate the desk off to the side, allowing you to see through to the back and also to improve circulation. The desk is located in front of the abandoned door, which we can use to relocate a fire command station. We'll hinge the glass panel in the middle so that you can get access to the station, but it will be basically out of view. And we'll replace all the wall sconces in the same location where they are now on both sides, but with a new fixture. And then at the edge of, at the end of the service corridor, we're showing glass and bronze, circulate-type doors, so that the building can control the circulation in and out, which it can't do. So the lower elevation is the existing conditions with the light fixtures at each bay. The door that's abandoned. And up above is the new fixtures, a new desk in front of the door, which can be repurposed, and then the security turnstiles at the entry to the elevator lobby. This is the proposal. So the security turnstiles would be, and the desk also would be bronze, to match the existing bronze, and would have a top in a red marble to match the existing marble. There are highlights on the floor as well as along the edge of the corner to the elevator lobby. Security turnstiles would be aligned on the floor to work with the existing torso joints and the pattern, the decorative patterns on the sides. The desk is located off to the side around desk, we thought is less obtrusive into the space visually and allows people to queue up from the side. It's a very narrow lobby, it's 16 or 17 feet. So this allows people to, when they're checking in, can queue up more visitors without obstructing the circulation. Also, the circular, picks up the circular, a lot of circular motifs in the lobby, with the decorative marble. Also, it's hard to tell here, it floats off the ground. You have legs which lift it up so it doesn't obstruct the torso pattern, as well as we have the light fixtures shown. Do you have a broken sample? We have a broken sample. So the light fixtures, it's a standard fixture, which we can gang three of them together, side by side, and mount it on a bronze back box. And that will allow us to get more light from the same location as the existing sconce. We can reuse the existing opening in the stone and the existing junction box. We can also locate the ballast, the emergency ballast, in that back box, so that the emergency lighting in the lobby, which that currently isn't. So again, so these will reuse the existing openings in the stone. And then on the side leading out to the service entrance, here we're showing glass and bronze, circulate doors. There was at one point some folding doors in this exact same location, so we can put the new doors in the same spot to hide the track marks that were left on the previous door, so there won't be any new disturbance to the torso because of the sound. And then here are the finishes and materials. And here you can see the light fixtures gang together so we can get access to the existing junction box and all the ballast and battery packs that go behind it. We've worked with Stephen Bernstein at Klein, Bedrich, Bernstein Lighting Design, on all of this, and Stephen can address the lighting. This is a mock-up that we did in the lobby.
The fixture on the right obviously is an existing fixture. It's from the 80s and clearly not appropriate for the architecture. I think in terms of the quality of the light, it was also kind of damaging to the lobby in that it only lit the ceiling. So it really divided the architecture really into two uneven parts, the ceiling plane and then the lower portion. The foot candle level on the floor is about one foot candle, which is really what we lighten up our streets to. The solution on the left-hand side, again, we found this fixture. Again, it will be dominated on brass material, which is more sympathetic to the finishes in the lobby. We are proposing that we stack it in three. There are these kind of triple elements. You can see on the bottom here, these linear elements that are repeated throughout the project. So we thought that it would be a good idea to repeat that. It also allowed us to achieve much higher light levels in this space. The unit itself has a fluted glass, which then recalls the type of plasterwork that you see above. We are getting about 10-foot candles in the space now. It'll allow you to see virtually all of the finishes much more clearly. As Anthony mentioned, it will have emergency lighting, which I believe there is none at the present time, which is a big plus. It also will have a dimming ballast so that we can tune the light to achieve the proper brightness relationships.
Yes, Michael?
In your appendage, you show an alternate with the rectangular desk. Can you talk about that a little bit and how you chose the one that you have versus that?
So the rectangle, we had looked at the rectangular desk, and we thought it intrudes more into the space. It sticks out further physically, and then also it's a little bit more difficult to, when you approach, to approach from the side, we thought. You'd be queuing up here sort of at the side. So it seemed a little more awkward. It also physically comes out a little bit more into a narrow space. We put this in, the community board had requested we revisit that, so that's why it came back. But we preferred the round. We also thought the round, there are a number of round elements, decorative elements, whether it's the on-the-door pattern, or they have these tubular marble elements along the walls also that it works with.
Was the, the security desk that's there now, was that original or is that aftermarket?
No.
Yeah, I asked that because I'm looking at page, I guess it's A06, and unless I'm misreading it, I mean, that's the picture in the lower left, that's the current security desk?
That's the current desk.
Yeah. It just matched the marble so well, I was wondering.
We did do some research on the red marble. It's no longer, it's from Southern France. I believe it's no longer cored, but for the small quantities that we need, you only get a slab or two, it is available.
All right, other questions? Yes, Kim?
I'll look at your question about the desk. I see the little accents of the circles in the floor, but everything else is rectangular. You know, with the waterboard detail, the ceiling. I don't know which one part of the district's right. Because everything else really is circular.
There are a lot of decorative elements on the floor pattern. You know, it's hard to see in this of the slides, but there are the tubular and the cylindrical elements. Right at the ends here. So there is a play of the round with the geometric. There's also some elements in the back service corridor, I think we don't have photos of, that also recall the curves, the circles. But it was also, part of it was functional, just that it doesn't stick out as far and it allows people, the circulation to flow better. It opens up the circulation and opens up visually, I think, to have it, visually, it's smaller. You see the curve versus that.
It seems as like that is the only advantage, really, that it's just, it's less obtrusive because it's smaller and doesn't stick out so much in a narrow space. But I would otherwise generally agree that somehow the circular element does seem to not as easily fit as something more rectangular. Yes, Michael? Okay, are there other questions? Yes, Diana?
No, no, I'd say comment, when we get to comments.
Okay. Well, why don't we take testimony and then we can go to comments. Are there any other questions? All right, Kelly Carroll?
Kelly Carroll, Historic Districts Council. I just passed out some blown-up images of the original light fixtures for you guys to examine, which are also in your book. An interior landmark, Eli Jacques Kahn's Mayan Revival Art Deco Lobby draws from pre-Columbian influences, including stepped pyramids asserting a distinct geometry. The proposed desk is unacceptable as it is curvilinear and looks like it belongs at a cash register counter in a streamlined, modern diner, not in this masterpiece space. The tile floor pattern is described in the designation as lending a strong directional quality to the space. The implied circulation, which is guided by shapes and patterns in the floor, leads people to the desk and then the elevator bank. Removing the desk as a gateway to the elevator bank and placing it against the wall disrupts the user's experience of a lobby described as, quote, "one of Kahn's most striking designs," end quote. Finally, the proposed light fixtures have the appearance of fluorescent tubes and are antithetical to the Art Deco aesthetic. Art Deco lighting is dimmed and always indirect light, usually applied to reflective surfaces such as marble. A lobby of this design caliber had custom-designed sconces at one time, as revealed by the Avery Archives, and we ask that these designs be replicated. The cumulative alterations as currently proposed for this space are severe detractions from Kahn's symmetrical, considered composition. Thank you.
Thank you. Christabel Goff?
Christabel Goff, for the Society for the Architecture of the City. H.J. Kahn was a gregarious soul, a friend of Clarence Stein, Raymond Hood, and Ralph Walker. And in the late 20s, when he increased his domination of the firm of Bookman and Kahn, his office acquired a reputation as a cutting-edge place to experiment with new ways of decorating skyscrapers. Young architects of many nationalities converged there, and two of the best seem to have worked on the Film Center Library, the Dutch expatriate Engelbartist Van der Verde and Shamu Nadir, an Indian designer of Persian ancestry, who graduated from the University of Pennsylvania and came to Kahn while the Two Park Avenue building was in progress. The exotic nature of Kahn's polychrome terracotta and mosaic decoration stemmed directly from the new work of his exotic assistants. These two young men were in the forefront of Kahn's decorative initiatives in the late 1920s, and we should be looking at the light fixtures they designed here and elsewhere. Never were there any exposed bulbs, strip bulbs, like this proposal. All lighting was indirect or masked by designed geometric glass and metal fixtures. The existing fixtures in the Film Building, apparently everyone agrees they are not original. We believe they are superior to the ones proposed. The lobby is somewhat dark, which makes the partially gold of Van der Verde signed mosaics jump out at the passerby in a way that would not occur if it were more fully lit. We believe that the proposed new fixtures should be reevaluated. Now, HTC has apparently found a photograph of the original fixtures, which we did not have, not having succeeded in getting to Avery in time after last Friday. But whether or not the fixtures are original, they are more correct for the period, and the directional illumination is very successful. It shows the ceiling, and it is really not fairly represented by these photographs, which make the lobby appear much darker than in fact it is. I visited there yesterday. I also think the circulation concerns may be somewhat overrated. I mean, a number of people go in and out, but there was no crowding. Anyway, thank you very much. Oh, and that information about those young designers, it's in this new book by Jewel Stern. Well, it's not very new, but it's about five years old.
Okay, thank. Frances Bolak?
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Frances Bolak. I'm an architect with the practice in historic preservation in the city. I teach also preservation at, in the preservation program at Columbia, and I'm a co-author of a book about Eli Jacques Kahn entitled, "Eli Jacques Kahn: New York Architects." And more broadly on the subject, an earlier book entitled, "Everyday Masterpieces: Memory in Modernity." The Film Center Lobby, I hardly need to remind you, is one of the greatest lobbies in New York City, and it's appropriately a New York City landmark. But it's also useful to remember that Kahn, Eli Jacques Kahn, Ralph Walker, and Raymond Hood were architects who gave us some of the greatest buildings in New York City, defining its skyline indelibly, and it's a skyline that is being mutated all over the world. So I think we should take his work very seriously, and I'm sure you do. This lobby is still beautiful, but it has been dying by a thousand cuts, namely, the loss of the original lighting and custom-designed original light fixtures that were closely connected to the decorative scheme. And that's really important because the two work together in terms of design. And the substitution of later light fixtures. The disastrous and disastrously large, and I don't think it's been mentioned, Annunciate a Panel, which is cutting through the mosaic in the elevator lobby, and is still there, and I don't think his proposal seeks to remove it. And of course, the poorly designed and not historic current security desk. So the attempt of this proposal to improve the lighting is very welcome, but I think it needs to go further, and the applicant should really look at the original light fixtures, which were at the edges of the V ceiling in the elevator lobby, and at the front and at the back, and try and understand what they were and to replicate it. So I think most of our study of the original lighting scheme and the original light fixtures would be very, very helpful. The, I'm concerned about the overcrowding of this lobby with new elements such as the turnstiles, which are going to damage the historic floors. And I'm also concerned about the circulate doors, which even though they don't cut through the fire hose panel, as your photograph shows, there's really nothing in the floor pattern that seems to indicate a point where these doors should really be located. So I think that what we're seeing here is an overcrowding of new elements in this lobby. And, you know, many class A office buildings in New York City do not have the security turnstiles, and they seem to do quite well with it. So, and they will become outdated very soon, I suspect. So I think that we should consider these things very, very carefully. And lastly, I think the desk is too fussy. It's over-detailed, and I think over-detailing doesn't stand a chance against Kahn's design. So thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? Hi, we received a recommendation from the community board for, they, their recommendations include that the turnstiles detract from the Art Deco motive. The reception desk is too large for the space. A straight-edged desk would be more appropriate. And at this point, they're unable to ascertain if the new lighting is appropriate based on the presentation, and they recommend increased illumination. We have also received a letter from the advisor to the Historic Districts Council, John Jurege, and he's raised some concerns, including historic light fixtures should be recreated, restored. The need for the turnstile should be reexamined, since it will damage the floor and visually disrupt the floor, and asks the applicants to restore mosaics on the elevator wall. And the other comment is really to us about designating the exterior of the building. It's not relevant to this project right now. So, okay, I guess, would you like to respond to the concerns we've heard?
The light, the original light fixtures are, the photo is helpful. It's a bit of a, you know, we do have, it's a shame the slides don't show as well, but you can see, right, there's a hint of the light fixtures here at the front of the, sort of the prow of the ceiling there. It's hard to tell what it is even with this. The, we did look through the archives and we found, you know, the only thing we could find on the drawings, talking about light fixtures, was this sheet here, which is not the same location. This is actually in the corner of the lobby room. And they indicate, you know, circles in a crisscross pattern, and it says "light." And, but there's no indication in the building that this was there or was taken out, or there are no remnants that we could see. So it's a bit of a mystery to us, admittedly. You know, I think the, going back to our earlier conversations with staff several, more than several years ago, the idea was to reuse the openings that have already been made, the damage was already done, to cut in the existing sconces that are there now. I don't remember what year that designation, what year that was approved, maybe in the early 80s. To reuse those openings, and that would be less intrusive than doing something totally new. We've also looked at a lot of the old photos of other Kahn's other lobbies, and a lot of times he has decorative sconces either tucked up at the ceiling line or in the wall. And most of those, the lighting is, with the exposure, it's so burned out that what they did was they'd come back later and draw in what the fixture was so that you could see it, because otherwise it's just a white glare. So it's, even where we have the old photos, it's a little bit of a mystery. But so anyway, the decision was made to go with the existing openings and not do further damage or leave the patch marks behind, as well as the, what would go into getting a custom light fixture, getting UL approved, and all of those issues.
Yes, Diana?
Some of the other questions in testimony, the panel, that is the directional panel, could that be removed and addressed in some other fashion? But I think it's not original. Well, I know it's not original.
Yeah, no, the, let me see, the, it's an L of the elevator panel in the back that interrupts the original mosaic. It's still in use. Parts of it, I think, have been abandoned, but the guts of it are still in use with the elevator system. So it was not part of our purview.
Can you talk a little about the security barriers and the need for that? That was something that two testimonies raised.
Yeah. The turnstiles.
I can rather address that. So my name's Brian, so I'm familiar with the building. It's one of our partners.
This is really.
This is my grandfather's favorite building. We tried to do a design that was really limiting impact to the lobby. We want to try to contain the historical significance of it. Unfortunately, this building has had significant security issues. I think we had a break-in just last week. And something that's been repeated over and over again. Even as the neighborhood's gotten better and the security issues have gotten less, they still are significant, and our tenants are, you know, at some point scared. So, and all of our other buildings got to 9/11. I can't say all, but almost all of our other buildings that had lobbies that were capable of having security turnstiles. We installed them after 9/11, and we had tremendous success in terms of limiting security issues. And what we do is we issue all the tenants an ID card, that's electronic, and that we know who's been in the building and who hasn't. Even with a man standing there and trying to understand who the tenants are and who they aren't, and trying to police that issue, it hasn't helped in this building. So we're trying to just address safety concerns and do it in the minimal way that doesn't, you know, harm the building.
Can that be done, so there's an ID card that goes into the elevator rather than setting up barriers in front of the elevator?
I think the problem is that someone can just walk in and get in the elevator still, so that they can just go to whatever floor they want, and then they can walk through the stairwells, and they have that happen. Where someone is said, we make, everyone who doesn't look like they're in the building, sign in, and what they do is they say, "I'm going to see the tenant on the 10th floor." And they go to the 10th floor, and then they get off, and then they walk down the stairs and go break in to the tenant on the 6th floor. And we actually had one last year where they went literally down the entire building, just trying every door that they could force, and then ended up going into like six different ones. We have them on camera, but it's already been done, and the tenants don't feel safe. And, you know, our concern is that something even worse happens, that it's not just a break-in for a laptop, that, you know, someone locks them in the bathroom, you can imagine what happened. So, I mean, our, you know, we understand, you know, how important this lobby is. And we're trying to really balance them out here. And this is the, without the minimum way to disturb the lobby that's still achieving the security.
All right, other questions? Any other questions? All right, so why don't we, the comments, Diana, you were going to say something?
Well, I have the same concern, I guess, about the lighting that, I'm not sure that this lighting is really appropriate. If we could get some, somewhat closer, at least, to the historic lighting. And I also, actually, I tend to favor the rounder desk simply because it's the, I want some, I have the feeling that I want something that does not look like it's part of the original architecture. There was a comment made by, you know, one of the speakers about having it be simpler than it is now. Maybe that would be a solution. Other commissioners may feel that the rectangular is more suitable in the space. But I think what's important is that it not detract from the architecture of the space. And I'm not sure if this quite works. And I'm not sure if this quite works. We have permitted security installations in a number of buildings. Certainly, this is a very important one, obviously. I think what's particularly important is that it not impede the view of the historic elements. And by and large, that, I feel, is accomplished here. So I, I guess I could approve the security installation as long as the glass is not damaging the terrazzo, which was one of the issues. And I assume that's something we're going to take care of with the glass doors I'm referring to now. So I would...
I'm sorry, so the security, you were talking about the glass doors or the turnstile?
I was saying that the turnstiles, I think I, I can approve the concept of the turnstiles, and I think actually the design is not particularly impeding the view. The glass doors, I was saying, as long as they're not damaging the terrazzo, which obviously is a step, you know, to be clear that that's not going to occur in any substantive way. And I think I'd like to see some reworking of the lighting. And I'm not sure that the security desk is exactly what is appropriate. I'm here from other commissioners.
Okay. Other comments? Yes, go ahead, Michael.
It is an unfortunate reality that, that we do require higher security in buildings like this. I, I would just like to be completely sanguine that staff has been presented with enough options to ensure that this is the only option that we have for, for increased security here. I also, I agree with the comments about the lighting fixtures. I think this is an interior landmark that most certainly deserves and warrants a little further investigation into the possibility of, of even a custom fixture that is much more closely replicative of the original. And I, I agree with Françoise Bolak's remarks about the, the desk, that it, it actually should be much simpler and, and much more along the lines of, of what Kahn would have brought us. She is the expert on Kahn, by the way.
Okay, yes, other comments? Yes, Fred?
Piling on, perhaps. Yeah, I think the, the lighting fixture in this really important lobby, and I think the applicant and the owner certainly understand the importance of the building. So in a way, we're just kind of helping them get there, I think, to be sure we're doing the right thing here. But I think the lighting fixture does warrant a closer study of the original approach. And, and maybe we have to accept that maybe there's a slightly lower level of lighting in this building, in this lobby, I mean, than we might ordinarily be proposing in a, in a present-day lobby. I, I want to suggest, I'm not sure anybody else would agree, that maybe the desk should not follow, whatever its shape, curved or rectangular, should not follow so closely the language of Kahn, but maybe be a contemporary element, clearly a contemporary element within this space, perhaps made of another material, glass or, I don't know what, a metal of some sort. But, but it, it's just, it's just a separate element, and it's clearly understood as a separate later addition that, that is very reversible, and even looks reversible.
Yes, Michael?
I, I agree with Fred. I think that, that the desk could be, could be something that is, or maybe should be something that is read as different. I think the, the applicant should really examine making it as small as absolutely possible as well. I, I, I hear their concern about the, the intrusion of the round, but I think there's a lot more exploration that could be done here to, to try to make this feel better in the, in the lobby. Also, I, I would direct your attention to LPC A01 in the appendix. There's a heck of a lot of holes being made in this floor for these security things. And I, I too bemoan their need, but if, if it works, it works. But let's just make sure that, that, that there aren't ones that require fewer penetrations, perhaps, or that the number is right. And the spacing tries to avoid making holes in, in the decorative aspects of the terrazzo, which is again, something we've done in other buildings. And I, I agree with everything else everyone says.
All right, other comments? Okay, I think we've got sort of a list of things that we'd like you to explore. And I think, given the importance of this interior landmark, which, you know, it's just, it's very textured, that many things happening, and I think we'd want to see your responses. So just in terms of the lighting, I, I know, I think there was some testimony that the information is available. I know you've probably tried to get as much, but I would just see if you could even speak with some of the people here today to see if they have better information regarding the historic lighting. And I would agree with Commissioner Bland about the lighting level as well. And while we understand it's a lobby and you want it to be well-lit for security reasons, but if there is something, we're trying to strike the right balance and give the sort of same ambience as intended. I think the desk, I think it seems the commissioner's not convinced that this is the only option, recognizing that your approach was to make it as unobtrusive as possible in terms of its vocabulary, as well as its size, but it may require a somewhat different response. So if you could sort of explore that. And I think some of the other issues had to do with, with these installations as well, and to try and make sure they're as limited in terms of the, the effect it would have on the existing fabric. So if you're talking about anchoring these, the turnstiles, then I think the question was how many do you need and what should be the width? And how thin or how many anchors do you need? And how much, therefore, is required to dig into or affect the existing flooring? So if you can explore that. And I think it'd be helpful, when you come back to us, to tell us what that exploration is, that you've looked at the other options and why the option before us is in fact the one that does the least amount.